Meditation and pledge to the flag.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We'll call this meeting the Montague County Commissioned Order this Wednesday, June 18th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. We are joined by Commissioner Bloom, myself. Commissioner Shakora is on Zoom anticipating today remotely. We're start with our consent and approval with our county administrator, Renetta McLeod. Good morning.
We have no exonerations to offer. Eight minutes for June 11th, 2025 vouchers, general county fund, 430,699.67, 911, 6,244.38, Chestnut Ridge Park, 739.20, Camp Muffley, 9,264.62, Mason Dixon Park, 462.79, Mon County Center, 7,593.58, transportation levy, $52,089.30, library levy, 12,784.65 EMS, 110, 269.62, assessors valuation, $30,153.00. Purchasing card vouchers, general county, 21,319.74, Chestnut Ridge Park, 687.26, Camp Muffley, 674.07, Mason Dixon Park, 131.60, assessors valuation, $87.50, for a voucher total of 683,198.28. We have one in-house approval budget revision for the general fund for law enforcement, 700. Position vacancies for commissions, boards, and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for June 18th, 2025.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there's no additional fiduciary items today, correct?
No, sir.
Moving on, introduction of new employees, personnel changes. We have several for the sheriff's office. Want to come on up?
Good morning.
Morning.
We are asking that you please approve the appointment of Michael Forbes and Brian Hennessy as full-time school safety officers. The effective date will be July 1st. It's a benefits eligible position. It was advertised and the salary is $3,583.34 per month.
I move to approve the personnel as presented.
Second with discussion.
Okay.
Just for clarification on the individual, is it that St. Francis is going to be paying the cost
Yes.
of that officer?
Yes.
And there is no car involved, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. There was questions before and we want, just wanted to make sure we resolve those issues.
That's for Officer Hennessy.
Officer Hennessy, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm fine.
Great. Anything further?
No, that's it.
To be clear, to be clear, you indicated Byron Hennessy and Michael Forbes, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
There was a third on the agenda. Is that still coming up?
That's for the tax, that's for the tax office commissioner. She's here.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take these two first and then, and move on to that one. So we have a, we've had a discussion. We have first and second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
I'd like to personally say welcome Brian back to the service where, and Mr. Forbes, we're honored to have folks of your experience and, and expertise in these positions. Our kids will be a lot safer as a result. So welcome. Thank you. And look forward to seeing up there. Drop off.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have employee for the tax office.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to reintroduce to you Riley Westman. She worked for us last summer and
And we've rehired her to continue with us again this summer. Starting date is June 18th.
It's part-time at-will employee, no probationary period, not eligible for full benefits, an hourly rate of $15.
Show move.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome back. Thank you. Thanks, Kelly. Next, we have you services center.
Uh, yes, sir. This is part-time, um, part-time relief worker, Ella Mahin. I'm not sure how to say her last name. Mahin?
That sounds right.
Okay.
We'll go with that.
Um, first day of employment is actually tomorrow, June 19th. It's 14:40 per hour. This is a part-time, non-benefit eligible position.
Show move.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, Camp Muffley, we have Autumn Duke George pool staff, seasonal part-time.
Here we go.
Sean move there. Or Tom move, Sean. If you'd be, I don't think you heard.
Yeah.
Oh, second.
The first and the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any more employees?
No, that's all.
Moving on to comments from the public. At this time, I will open the comments from the public section. So basically you have three to four minutes, the president's discretion on time to come forward. Please state your name and your address and state your piece and come on down. Good morning.
Good morning, commission members. My name is Louanne Hendershot. I live at 18 Oak Court in Acorn Village, Morgantown. The following is a statement on behalf of multiple homeowners within the Acorn Village Homeowners Association. Our homeowners have been significantly, significantly impacted by the priorities given to large-scale developers over the individual homeowners in the past. For approximately one year, we have expressed opposition to the proposed King's Court development due to the heightened risk of flooding within the neighborhood. Previously, this commission, the utility board, and the planning commission assured us that all necessary safeguards were in place based on environmental studies conducted by the DSI. However, the plans implemented by the developer appear to deviate from those initially presented and approved. The grubbing and grading permit allowed for extensive alteration before the installation of the storm water management system designed to protect our community. A significant portion of this work proceeded without the full awareness of the planning commission and resulted in a flooding event that significantly damaged many of our properties, significantly damaged. Our community seeks clarification on the measures in place to safeguard properties in the immediate future. We request information regarding potential consequences for the developers' actions, given the apparent discrepancies between the presented plans and the work being performed. Further, does the commission have the authority to issue a temporary halt to all construction work until these plans can be thoroughly reviewed once more? The members of the Acorn Village Homeowners Association formally request an immediate work session with this council and all relevant stakeholders. This session would provide us an opportunity to discuss a collaborative path forward to ensure the safety and security of our community. I ended my previous statement before this commission by asking when this project goes left, who is going to protect us? I ask that question once again because in fact, this project has gone left and we are left damaged. Who is going to protect us? Thank you.
Thank you. We, we don't comment directly during comments from the public. We'll address in our comments at the, at the end of the meeting if we so choose. Who else for comments from the public? Please come forward. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Judy Delagarza. I live at 6,003 Woodland Bluff Road, Morgantown, West Virginia. My husband and I, our friends and neighbors in the Stewartstown area and across the lake are vehemently opposed to the MARL project, the high voltage transmission line. We currently have transmission lines already on both sides of Stewartstown Road going out, out our way. But we do not believe that there are any real benefits to this project for West Virginia residents, only disastrous costs. In the last 20 years, the electrical demand across the U.S., even in the mid-Atlantic area, has basically been flat. And it's only been within the last two to three years that the utilities are saying, we need more energy. And the reason being, Northern Virginia is putting up data centers right and left. Northern Virginia has the highest concentration of data centers in the world. And in 2023, they accounted for 26% of Virginia's total electricity consumption. One data center can basically use the same amount of electricity as 750,000 average homes. Let's consider the costs of the MARL project to all West Virginia residents, probably more specifically to our area, true. But West Virginia ratepayers, all West Virginia ratepayers will pay $440 million for the two proposed transmission lines to power these West Virginia data centers. We have the MARL link and we have the Valley link in the south. West Virginia residents will lose private property all up and down Stewartstown. It's going through farmland. People own these properties, have for years. We will see loss of our property values. We've been there 33 years, nice small community. We've enjoyed the peace and quiet and tranquility, tranquility of the lake. But we are going to be seeing power lines from our homes. We will see loss, as I say, of our property values and our beautiful tranquil cheat lake will be marred by 110 to 200-foot towers with high voltage lines crossing the lake closer to us, up from the dam, the backwaters, which is where all of the boaters go for calm waters to swim. And it will go up the Pennsylvania side for a ways, um, up the lake. Construction will impact the abundant wildlife habitat in this area and the potential erosion runoff and sedimentation flow into the lake could have significant consequences on the aquatic life. We, in West Virginia, are being asked, asked to bear the brunt of Virginia's economic progress. Sending electricity over miles and miles of high voltage transmission lines is the least efficient and the most expensive source of power. Surprisingly enough, West Virginia passed the West Virginia Power Generation and Consumption Act, which allows companies seeking to build data centers to, one, create their own independent energy grid to power those data centers, and pay and build for their own power on site, that it not require new transmission and it does not shift the costs of providing power to the ratepayers. Think that's pretty significant for us. West Virginia is wild and wonderful and a beautiful state. I believe we need to ask ourselves what we want our legacy to be for future generations, a state crisscrossed with transmission lines that serve out-of-state interests, or a beautiful state with recreational opportunities galore that boosts tourism. I am asking the commissioners on behalf of all West Virginia residents to join Preston and Hampshire counties and pass a resolution to oppose the MARL transmission line project. This action would be in the best interest of all residents. And as a side note, I just want you to understand some of the historical places where these lines will cross. The project will cross the Monongahela National Forest, the Appalachian National Scenic Trail, the CNO Canal National Historic Park, Harper's Ferry National Historic Park, Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail, and it will run parallel down the view shed of the Potomac River. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. [inaudible]. All right. Who's next? Okay. Come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nancy Eisentrout. I live at 17 Oak Court in Acorn Village beside Louanne. Louanne and other neighbors and I, on Sunday, got completely flooded. And prior to, 15 minutes ago, I did not intend to speak. I typically avoid public speaking at all costs. It's not my forte. So I apologize if what I say doesn't sound cohesive, but I feel compelled to speak. What happened on Sunday was nothing short of shameful. It was shameful that the developer was given a grubbing and grading permit whenever we warned months ago that earthmoving would put my development at risk for flooding. It is shameful that in the two weeks prior to Sunday, I sent communications asking for help because what they were currently doing was putting us at risk. And it is shameful that on Sunday, when the developer was called and told, you're causing our neighborhood to flood, no one, I am told, from King's Court Development showed up to even see what was occurring, let alone assist us. As Louanne asks, who's going to protect us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Mr. Matheny?
My name is Chad Matheny. I've come before the county commission a few times here in the last months regarding a flooding issue. As you all know, we have probably record rainfall here in the last few months. This issue is not always about the rainfall. It's always wet in the location. I have the business at Delslo Richard Core Metal Roofing and Supply. Last time I was here, I asked for the commission to give me some help reaching out to the state road. I was able to yesterday speak with a gentleman from the state road that pretty much felt, in my opinion, felt that it was all a property owner issue and that there were no issues with the state's road or drainage in that area. This morning, I got up early after the rain. It had stopped raining and I have video footage of several drains that are totally stagnant. There's no water going through them whatsoever. I have one drain directly across from one of my properties or on my side of the property that it fills up on my side and burbles up out of the ground on the other side. The drainage way on to Deckers Creek is apparently plugged. Several of these drains are plugged. They need upgraded. They are ancient. And on that gentleman's defense, I only spoke with him yesterday. I did invite him to the county commission meeting and he said that he was unable to attend. I invited him to the next one. At that point, he pretty much indicated to me that he did not want to come before the county commission and represent the state's position on, on that. He mentioned that at a previous date, he had had one of his coworkers or someone from the organization come out and evaluate the situation. He said he thought that there had been a plan put into position or into, into consideration, but nothing had been done. So I'm here once again to ask, did anyone from the county commission reach out to the state road or a representative of that to see if they could help us work together as a community and try and get this issue fixed? I, as a personal citizen, am asking the county commission, if nobody claims the drain that is putting out 400 gallon a minute into the backyard of one of the rental properties, nobody claims to take responsibility of that, I, as a landowner, if I pump that out to the edge of the road, will the county commission have any recourse towards me? Or what, what as a citizen should I do to correct this problem or issue? I've reached out to all the entities that I am aware of or familiar with to try and find out what can be done. And that's my question today. And secondly, did anybody in fact reach out to the state division highways to see if, if they could lend a hand? That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Anyone else for public comment today? Seeing no one else, I'll close the comments from the public. Next, we'll move on to calling group Coon for grants. Come on forward, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, so I have some requests for reimbursements. The first one is for the Community Corrections Grant in the amount of $14,757.79. The next one is the Governor's Highway Safety Program, Safe Communities, in the amount of $487.56. Impaired driving in the amount of $3,033.90. Saki Grant in the amount of $24,065.04. And finally, the VOCA Grant in the amount of $9,166.45.
Show move. That we have the president sign the documents.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, under correspondence waiver, request received from Tara Mason, Executive Director of the Hope Dealer Project regarding the possible participation by the Montague County Commission in the West Virginia Goes Purple in conjunction with National Recovery Month in September 2025.
They're asking for a signed proclamation regarding the West Virginia Goes Purple Initiative for the National Recovery Month. They want that done in August and then potential financial contribution from public health, community development, opioid settlement, or discretionary funds to help support implementation efforts in our area.
Okay. Um, any other correspondence from you, from [inaudible]?
That's all. Oh, nope. I'm sorry. That's not all. So we received a, an opinion, it was sent to us from, I believe the chief judge received that. She sent it to the commission from the West Virginia Attorney General regarding June, the Juneteenth holiday.
Okay.
Um, so.
So basically, my understanding was we sought an opinion as to
Berkeley County.
Berkeley County sought an opinion as to the, the Juneteenth holiday, as far as whether courthouses should be open or closed on that day.
Yes.
It is a federal holiday. From reading the opinion, however, it's not been recognized by the state at this point as, as being a state holiday. So based on that opinion, the attorney general essentially indicated that it, being a federal holiday, we, the state, the attorney general indicated his opinion that courthouses cannot be open
Correct.
for regular business based upon it being a federal holiday.
Correct.
If we can discuss that under, we'll put it under G, under new business, and we'll discuss it at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. I don't have any other correspondence.
Okay. I don't have any.
Sean, any correspondence?
No. No.
I don't have any other. Moving forward, no unfinished business on the new business. Consideration of proposal provided by Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield for county employee group dental insurance effective August 1, 2025.
Well, we actually receiving a 7% decrease in premiums and then we'll be adjusting the county's portion of the premiums. So the employee premiums will stay the same. Individual is 27.96, parent and child, and all the, well, all the other tiers are $70.91 a month.
I move that we approve the proposal as presented, keeping employee premiums at their current level.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, consideration to continue offering an option for employees to participate in a flexible spending account for plan year effective August 1, 2025.
I move to discontinue the option for employees to participate in a flexible spending account for plan year effective 8/1/25 with discussion.
Second.
The first and the second, now some discussion. Sean?
Yeah, um, since the commission is picking up 100% of the health insurance deductible, the FSA option isn't especially needed. And two, current utilization is only about 16% of employees. And then three, there's a risk to the county for employees to take the option, exhaustive funds which are front-loaded but don't work the entire year to pay back, pay the reimbursement back. So based off of that, I, I, it's my intent that we didn't read the option at this time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything, Tom?
No.
I, I, I agree with your, your take on it. Entertain, we have a first and a second, all in favor of discontinuing the option for the flexible spending account for the plan year effective August 1, 2025. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on, consideration of requisition number 103 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
The requisition is for $1,011,542.59. That is for sales tax collected in the month of May.
I move that we approve the requisition number 103 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor. Or do you want to give your update, Sean, of before we?
Renetta, you, you gave the, did you, I'm sorry, did you state the entire balance or did you state the amount available for debt service?
The amount for debt service.
Okay, which is $1,010,825.86. And that amount is less the $100,000 tax, the 10,191.25 tax admin fee. That's the 12th?
No, Commissioner, it's $1,011,542.59. That's the amount of the transfer to West Banko.
Okay. I'm sorry, my note, I had my note as different. So you're, that may have been the last ones.
I think it might have been.
Overall, for the year, we're just a slight layoff last year's collections, but I still think we're trending in a, in a good direction, especially with the opening of Academy Sports. Things should start, the collection should start trickling up a little bit.
Okay. We had a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, consider the reapportment of Eldon Cowan to the Montague County Solid Waste Authority until June 30, 2029, as recommended by the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, consideration of the request by the West Virginia Sober Living Solutions to modify the budget of the grant funding awarded by the Montague County Commission from the Opioid Settlement Fund.
So they had previously had a budget that would include provider, let's see, what's that for? It's supposed to be a peer recovery support specialist. Because the delay on the building that they were purchasing got, because there was a delay, they had to put off hiring that peer recovery specialist. So they're asking to put the entire amount of their, their grant for opioid settlement into the building purchase. So that's what, that's what you're, they're requesting. So the entire $84,000 award, they want to funnel straight towards the building purchase.
Okay.
I move to approve the request as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, consideration to release RFP number 2025 MCC-002 titled Montague County Center Solar Project.
I move to release the RFP as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, this is the, we've, we've talked about this a while back. And due to some possible changes that are coming forward, what we are looking at is the ability to, to have solar redundancy in our building, actually to help reduce our energy costs and to move towards a net zero footprint for that building. So to take advantage of some carbon tax credits that are out there, we needed to, this needed to be put on the front burner so that we could get an RFP out, get proposals and evaluate them and get, get moving before those tax credits are no longer available. So I, I think this is a, is a positive, positive development for the county and I hope that based off of our participation and if it's successful, that we, we may consider this for other areas of the county.
Okay. The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Reports from elected officials, department heads?
Morning.
Mayor Lewis?
Morning.
County Grahamville?
Good morning.
Jeff?
Yes?
Can we hold up?
Oh, that's right. We had G.
Yeah, G. We forgot to do G, okay.
It's not on there, so...
I'm sorry.
All right, you're right. Thanks, Sean.
So in regards to the guidance we received from the AG's office, I would, this isn't on the agenda, but I would move that we close all county buildings on Thursday, June 19, in accordance with the guidance provided by the West Virginia Attorney General, and to direct staff to send out a message for all employees to check with their elected official or department supervisors for further direction as far as their status for tomorrow.
Second?
Just a bit of discussion, we are not, this motion and any action we may take isn't making any type of political statement. This is strictly a legal opinion from the top legal authority in the state, being the Attorney General, indicating to us that in their opinion, we would be, in his opinion, we'd be afoul of federal law if we didn't follow the...
State code.
State code, that we didn't follow, that if it's a federal holiday, that if we didn't follow the guidance, then we could be in violation of state law. So based upon that, we've heard a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the county buildings will be closed, the courthouses will be closed on tomorrow, Once again, all county employees are to check with their direct supervisor, elected official, to determine whether they'll be required to report to work or not, but the buildings will be locked. Next, reports from elected official department heads, Mayor Lewis, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this will be my last report about our traffic signal project.
You had me scared there for a second.
Yeah, me too. Oh, not yet. Our engineer and our contractor are finishing up paperwork, and the only thing that we're doing right now is reevaluating some landscaping issues where, you know, we disturbed some property, and we want to make sure that that's all good to go before we sign off. And of course, the weather's not cooperating, but other than that, we're good. Timing issues have been taken care of, everything else, so.
Wonderful.
All right.
It's made a remarkable difference over there.
It has.
So thank you for all your work. Any other elected officials or department heads? No? Reports from county commissioners. Sean?
And I apologize I'm not there in person today. Last week, after our meeting, I went to Roanoke for WDE Risk Corp board meeting, and I woke up Friday morning with a horrible sore throat, and I've been progressively getting worse since then, so I decided that's an abundance of caution that I would participate remotely today. But I did go and participate in our risk board meeting on Thursday and Friday. Monday, I participated remotely for a couple interviews we had for our park. Yesterday, the administrator and I had a tag up with Armond County Center Director regarding this solar RFP. Today, we have, it's a regular day, one work session, and the administrator and I have a meeting with Enterprise this afternoon, and also the map board meeting. Tomorrow, as we discussed, is the Juneteenth holiday, and it sounds kind of funny saying, well, the buildings will be locked, but you need to check with your employees, but the buildings will be closed to the public if the elected officials will provide direction as to whether the employees need to come to work or not. But from our standpoint, all of our county offices that we directly, all of our commission offices that we directly report to us will be closed as indicated, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Friday is actually another West Virginia Day holiday, and I still have a tag up with our broadband team in the afternoon. In general, I wanted to respond to the residents from Acorn Village that came. I do hear regularly from Nancy Isentrell. Nancy, every time I receive information from you, I reach out to Andrew and ask him to reach into, look into it and provide information back. I do acknowledge that obviously we had some extreme flooding that occurred this past weekend. I think this is the second time in five years that we've had flooding on Patterson Avenue, so it would, and we've obviously had some extreme flooding in target spots throughout the state. That's not making light of your situation. I think that the Commission needs to have Andrew provide us with an after summary report as far as what happened and what, any efforts by the developer that could have committed, could have contributed to this flooding, so that we actually have our facts before we respond. But I certainly do take every time I'm contacted seriously and immediately contact our planner to get a response from him regarding these issues. So Jeff, I would, as President, I would suggest that we ask Andrew for an update on what occurred over the weekend and how, if, how the, if there's anything that was done by the developer that exasperated this issue, or whether it was just a timing issue or what, but I certainly think that we ought to at least have an answer so that we can provide to our citizens.
Well, we'll look into that immediately. I'll get with Andrew later today. Is that all for you? Is that all for you, Sean?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Tom? Okay. First of all, I want to put this in the record. Last Tuesday, Mickey Tinker, who has been picking up food for the Western End in Wadestown Food Pantry, came to the pantry, plus more, on Tuesday. On Wednesday, he passed away. And I just want the public to know that, for those of us who worked with food insecurity in the state, he was a beacon of light that worked tirelessly to help those in need. He connected all the food pantries with his heart and soul and made all of us a better person, and he will surely be missed. He'd been doing that for years. He also ran the powwow at Mason Dixon Park, and he will surely be missed. But I did want that in the records. Second, let's see how I can say this. Mr. Matheny, I know that we have reached out numerous times to DOH. I know the President had, I know I have, but I'm going to say this, so. I received a phone call from the district engineer yesterday, very upset and very angry. For whatever reason, maybe you didn't mean to do this, you gave him the impression that you either represented us or you worked for the County Commission. And he was calling to find out why the county commissioners was telling him what to do and what was going on. And after much discussion, he realized that you were an individual who lived, one of the owners, and unfortunately, this is a civil suit between landowners, and though we have been trying to get help, that is where it rests, and that is the problem we are having right now. And there's no way he could come on your property to do something if he didn't do something on someone else's property. So at this time, he is waiting to see what can happen. He will try and, he is still planning to look at the one culvert that he said is blocked that he is planning to clean out, but that is the extent of what they are looking to do, and I would appreciate in the future that makes sure that if you contact individuals, you clarify who you are and that you are not a representative or an employee of the County Commission. Thank you.
Can I speak to that?
No, you can't.
No, I did not.
No, sir.
Jeff, I forgot to relay one thing. In regards to the resident that talked about the MARL project, I do, we have been getting inundated with information regarding that project, and the Commission is doing its fact-finding to actually understand all angles of the project, so just because we've been silent doesn't mean that we are not getting educated on the issue. It's the intent of this Commission to generally research issues and make sure that we have all our facts before we weigh in, but I did want to let you know that we are, we had a person come in that spoke a couple weeks ago in public session, and she has been regularly sending me stuff so that I myself can get educated. I've talked to a number of individuals in public about this, and there's an event on the 29th. It's a, it's a community meeting for anybody that wants to get updated on it, so we're certainly, we're certainly participating in those discussions to really try to get educated ourselves before we make any, take any public stance. But I did want to let you know that that's not a, that's not an issue that the Commission isn't looking into.
Thanks, Sean. I was, on my notes to mention as well, I plan to participate in that, the June 29 information gathering session. We also have some plans to talk with different parties involved to get more educated, as Sean said. Now, while we have no direct control over anything, we certainly are not opposed to taking a public stance on an issue once we, once we make known what our stance would be. So I appreciate you coming in and giving us the information that you have. It's very informative, and so we'll certainly take that into consideration in formulating our opinion on it as we go forward. As to the flooding in the King's Court area, and then I'll address also in the Delslo Richard area, we are certainly looking into that. I had a brief conversation with our planner prior to the meeting. I plan to follow up with him again. As to, we don't have any direct power or authority to take individual action in a situation. We have a planning office that has certain parameters that they can follow with regards to the permitting and allowing the project to go forward, but as far as, I think the question was asked, what can the County Commission directly do? We don't have an official gavel that we can throw down and action we can summarily take against a private developer, but we certainly are looking into it. And with all the flooding that's occurred, our hope is, and that doesn't help you now, but our hope is in the future, when the Pocono Run project gets completed, that that will hopefully alleviate some of the upstream problems that come down toward you and then subsequently into the stadium and in daylight by the Alumni Center in there at Patterson Drive. But of course, we're not experts in that. We only go off what the engineers tell us and going from there, but we are certainly looking into it. I'm sorry for your, the damage and the, there's nothing worse than, well, I mean, there's worse things, but it's terrible having water infiltration into your home and onto your property. I've experienced it myself, and it's a terrible feeling when every time it rains, you're wondering what's going to happen to my property, what's going to happen to my house, what am I going to have to deal with later? Is it safe in my house now that there's been water intrusion? I've dealt with it. It's a horrible thing, and we are certainly going to do what we can to help and to look into it in that regard. But thank you for coming in. It's not easy to get up in front of a group of people and state what you had to say, and we appreciate you coming forward and letting us know about that. As to the, I was thinking about, Chad, I was thinking about you guys when I, I was actually on vacation and I saw all the flooding, and any time that I hear flooding, the first thing I think about is down there. I can imagine whatever's going on elsewhere, it's probably happening two or three times in the area because you're getting flooding when it hasn't rained in two or three weeks. We are kind of at an impasse on what can be done. Of course, again, we have limited authority, and what we can personally do as a commission, we have contacted MUB and DOH, and we continue to have those discussions. We talked to our floodplain coordinator to see what can be done, and they're limited as well, other than giving permits or not as to what can be done in that area. So we'll continue to have those discussions. I'm sorry to say that we don't have a direct plan of action at this point that we can say, hey, we're going to do this, this, and this, and it's going to fix that, that, and that. I wish we did, but at this time, we're still trying to figure out whose responsibility it is to fix it, to not fix, I don't know. And that's something that we're still investigating. We're not, we certainly hear your pleas each week, and I appreciate you coming in and updating us on it continuously, but all I can tell you is that we're still, we're still trying to do what we can do to help. In other matters, I was out last week on a family vacation, and while I was gone, I was saddened to hear of the passing of a former state delegate, Doug Scaff, was a personal friend of mine, passed in a car accident. My heart goes out to his wife, Marissa, and their three young children. I understand the, I was out of town for the funeral, but it was, it was quite, quite in attendance and certainly deserving of a man that did a lot for his community, for state, and for charities, and so my heart goes out to his wife and his family as they go through this trying time. Other than that, we certainly appreciate the first responder response to the flooding that was going on. I got a, I wasn't able to take the call, but I did get a call from our 911 coordinator or director, Jimmy Smith, Emergency Service Director, to update me on what was going on. I wasn't able to take the call, but later found out what had been going on. We're fortunate in a sense that we didn't have the massive devastation that Marion County and other areas of the state saw, but that doesn't lessen in any way the, those that were impacted in our area. So thank you to all that assisted in keeping our citizens safe and trying to protect property as best it can. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn if no one else has anything.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
First and the second, we are adjourned. Thank you.